All right, good evening, everyone. I would like to call to order the February 11th Macon County Board of Commission meeting. And I apologize for the cramped quarters. I understand we're having court upstairs, so just bear with us. But it's nice to say hello and welcome. And I think we live in one of the most unique places on the planet where you have to keep a tee-shirt, a raincoat, a coveralls in your truck, and sometimes you wear all three in the same day. So I'd just like to welcome you tonight, and let's start off with some announcements. Ms. Tammy?
Chairman, I have a couple. The first one is actually on your agenda. Reminder, the joint meeting this Thursday, February 13th at 6:00 in Highlands. It's a joint meeting between this board, the Franklin Town Council, and the Highlands Board of Commissioners. Just want to remind everybody of that, and then, of course, tonight, we'll recess this meeting and continue it to the meeting on February 13th. And I also want to make another announcement that might be of interest to a lot of folks that are sitting out here in the room. But as of this afternoon, on our Facebook page and our Macon County webpage, under our Human Resources section, there is an animal shelter attendant position that has been posted. Ms. Gahak, she needs some credit for that because she was able to use some funding for a contractual position through a staffing agency to hopefully help with some of those issues, at least until the end of June, until we can research the issue a little bit more. So I thought folks would like to know that.
Thank you, Warren.
You got any questions? I'd just like to congratulate the chairman for the Franklin Press Elected Official of the Year.
Mr. Counsel? All right, I'd like to ask Commissioner Breeden to lead us in a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance.
And as we go into this moment of silence, I just want us to remember our neighbors to the east who are still dealing with a lot after the hurricane, especially on nights like tonight. We just want to keep them in our thoughts.
A pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, no public hearings. Any additions to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if this should be an addition to the agenda or not, but since reports and presentations at 9:00 a.m., the budget kickoff for '25-'26, I have sat through two budget cycles and voted against both budgets with disagreements in this. And I would like to recommend a committee. This committee would be on government efficiency, and you and I sit on this committee. So that's just something to... Because I would like to be able this year to really understand and really support the '25-'26 budget, and I think the only way is really to get some answers that I have not gotten in the last two years. And I would just like... I'd like to spend the effort to... You know, I tried to get the budgets for each department presented in front of this board, and it didn't happen. And I think I have actually sat through some of the departments, and they presented their budget to me as an individual. But I think it'd go a long ways for us to completely understand the makeup of Macon County government, where these tax dollars are going, and the transparency through this.
Okay, Commissioner Sherrill. I mean, as far as additions to this agenda, I don't know how to place that, but I feel like I'll make a commitment to you to help look into efficiency. That'll suffice. All right, public comment. And while it's making its way up here, a side note on public comment. I've checked around a little bit, and we're one of the few boards that have a five-minute public comment per person, per speaker. A lot of boards have cut down to three-minute public comment. The allocated time is 45 minutes. So the difference is, we hear nine speakers at five minutes, or we hear 15 speakers at three minutes. And I personally would rather seeing the volume of people in here at some point in time, the board holds that power, allow 15 people to speak on three minutes. So food for thought for this board and for public comment on situations like this when we have a full sheet and we are limited to 45 minutes. All right? First speaker. Commissioner Shields warned me about some of these names. Ms. Tamra.
There she is. Tamra Zwinack, I'll spare you the name of what happened trying to pronounce that. Well, good evening. Thank you so much for giving me the chance to speak. And I will try to keep it down to three minutes, you know, so more people can share. And I think that's good to have public input. Okay, good evening to all of you commissioners. I'm here tonight to inform you, if you don't already know, of a gas leak in the vicinity of my residence at Indigo Homestead on Siler Road in Franklin. And I believe it was around January 27th. I apologize that I don't have the exact date. This property is not located in the city of Franklin. Thus, I'm here tonight to speak with you folks about this and to bring this to your attention, see if there's anything we can do. My concern is none of the residents knew of the leak. We were not notified, and all of us found out later that day through word of mouth what likely happened. I spoke with several neighbors, and this is what concerns us. One resident was outside and noticed an intense odor she surmised was gas. Two other residents went to Walmart and were not allowed back on the property by the police for two hours, and were told there was a gas leak. That's why they couldn't get back in. A resident in her late 80s was stranded at the Chick-fil-A for hours, unable to get back home. When she called Tokoa, the natural gas company involved here allegedly, they had no information on a gas leak. The maintenance man of the property where I reside surmised a gas leak was taking place but took no action to notify the residents. What is most concerning is no one was notified about the gas leak from the responsible party, putting us all in potential danger if a burner or spark, you know, were to ignite an explosion. I personally did not know there was a leak. And by the way, my neighbor called Tokoa, and they didn't know anything about it. My windows were closed, so I did not smell gas, and when I went out to run errands, there was no odor that I could discern. However, police were blocking traffic in both directions, and Siler Road only has one way to go, right or left, right from our complex. And there's no alternative exits. Apparently, officers were not letting residents back on the property. I found out about the situation from a neighbor who called me in distress, saying that we may be evacuated. Remember, I'm out, and they're not letting anybody back on, right? I have two cats, okay, that would have been stranded at home, okay? Many residents also, you know, they have medications. They can't get back in, can't get their access to their medications. So, you know, if an evacuation were to take place, what were we going to do, you know? So no one was able to return home to get any needed items or to pick my cats up or, you know, any of that. So furthermore, without knowledge, residents could have inadvertently caused an explosion. There's 60 units here, like, I don't know, 100-some-odd people or more, you know, elders, middle-aged working people, and children. So I'm asking the commission to explore ways to notify residents, to call maybe the company to have a hearing, so we can devise some kind of warning system. Now, I did provide a couple of commissioners with a flyer, a mailing that we did get from the Tokoa. Oh, shoot. Okay, anyway, it's in here, and it tells us, if there's a gas leak, be careful. It could explode something. So, I don't know. Duke has a great warning system. We get constant notices. I don't see why this company can't do the same. Thank you.
Tamra, do you mind giving me your phone number, and I'll follow up with some information for you, if you don't mind?
Thank you, Tamra. Thank you, Warren. Dr. Joanne Rosner.
Rosner.
Rosner. Please state your address for the record.
I'm Dr. Joanne Rosner. I live at 207 Evans Creek Road in Scaly Mountain, North Carolina, which is, of course, Macon County. So... Okay, I better go quick. Now, you have addressed some of my concerns with the announcement about hiring tonight, and I'm grateful for that. I think we need to say a few things anyway. First of all, we are the people... We are not keyboard warriors. Nobody in this room is here just to complain. We're the people cleaning up dog poop, taking care of sick animals, and trying to solve the problem. I sent each of you a letter. I sent each of you a document that I wrote called "The Benefits of a Functional Animal Control." I've received no replies, but I did understand verbally that some folks got that, and I think that bears discussion. I came into this picture... I've been volunteering at this animal shelter for months. I have spent thousands of dollars of my own money and time. I am extremely active in the animal care community. I vaccinated last month largely at my own expense. 198 indigent animals, working with one of the other humane organizations. This is the second time I've done that. And the third thing is scheduled for Scaly Mountain in April. So I come to you with an enormous amount of experience. I'm a veterinarian, and I'm a specialist, and I've been a vet for 39 years. I've worked at this shelter. The reason I got involved was the brutal attack on an animal that was being controlled by an elderly volunteer. Most of us who volunteer at the shelter are old ladies. This cannot continue to happen. People and animals cannot be injured. There are not even smoke detectors in this building. I watched your meeting in December where the statement was made. We've largely managed the facility issues. I owned a business for 25 years. I would live in absolute terror of an employee, public, or volunteer person suing me in that building. So let's talk about a functional animal control. Some of us are business people. There are benefits to commerce beyond just the ethical, decent, and humanitarian benefits of a shelter. We make Franklin look like a community. Who cares? We don't have roadkill. We don't have pet refuse. Your children are not exposed to roundworms from dog poop, which can be blinding. And I can speak to some of the other things. Public education. We can't educate the public without educated staff members. And that's the solution long-term. Spay neuter vaccination. Public safety. Mr. Sherrill, who gave me two hours of his time voluntarily, brought up an issue of public safety beyond dog bites. Traffic. Dogs running in the road are a traffic hazard and say something about our community. So you all have the document that I wrote. So we need adequate staffing. The other thing that we need moving forward is an open door for public comment and some input if you all are moving towards privatization of the shelter. You know, I'd love to know this government efficiency committee. God's going to let any of the public in on that? But seriously, we need to be part of that. We're the people scooping the dog poop and putting these dogs back together. We need input. You know, what are you going to do if you give animal control to the sheriff's department? I just drove for 17 months. I have been driving to Bryson City to testify in an animal cruelty case. I get there, they continue the case. It finally went to trial. The gentleman was sentenced to 30 days in jail after 17 months. 24 hours later, he was out on bail. He threw a puppy out a window on camera in front of the animal shelter, in front of the child whose puppy it was. I tried to get the DA to prosecute for child abuse, and they don't have enough evidence. But...
Thank you for your time. I hate to interrupt you right there.
No, you can stop me.
Respect for...
No.
Constance Neely. Hey, there.
Hi, thank you so much. Constance Neely, I'm up in Scaly Mountain, and I want to support what Dr. Joanne Rosner has just said. I want to thank Commissioner Cave for the announcement, and I also want to thank Commissioner Sherrill for spending time with Dr. Joanne. I want to back us up. The mission of Macon County Animal Services is to protect human health, safety of residents, safeguard animals, promote humane treatment. It's meant to encourage the adoption of healthy and non-aggressive animals and promote responsible pet ownership. But to achieve that, we need the adequate human, financial, and infrastructural resources. An animal's well-being is dependent on having appropriate staffing. With staffing shortages, we're going to see a decline in animal care, increased overcrowding, higher rates of unnecessary euthanasia, and a slower response to animal control issues that put the public at risk, and the staff, they're going to burn out, and we're going to lose trust in our leadership. Immediate solution is hiring more staff and ensuring that the volunteers actually want to be a part of this shelter. And we're so grateful to Dr. Joanne as one of the local veterinarians who has been free of charge, ceaselessly, ceaselessly helping us. So, but we have heard conversations about privatization. I just want to register a couple of quick points. It comes with risk. Profit over animal welfare, a private company will cut corners. They will save money. It'll lead to poor conditions for the animals. The loss of government control, the county will have less oversight. And how the company handles cases, there could be job losses, people who are affiliated could be let go, and of course, there could be public backlash because residents may not trust the for-profit company. So we just encourage the commission to take the lack of staffing seriously, but actually to review the root causes of why we are seeing the problems we're seeing, and that we can address the issues of shelter management in a very sustainable way. So thank you.
I feel kind of out of place. I think I'm the only one not talking about animals.
Thank you for your service.
So, thank you. Fortunately, my comments are brief. It's about some information that has apparently been out there for a little while, but I only recently became aware of it, and I don't know if you're aware of it. I'd like to start by saying that the FRL has served Macon, Jackson, and Swain Counties admirally for 80 years. Over the last several years, there has been some controversy that started with the display at the Macon County Library that offended some of our residents and has continued with book challenges and some, I think, unfair allegations against library staff and the FRL leadership. Although the uproar has somewhat quieted down recently, the FRL detractors nonetheless continue their efforts and have seen some success. Not only have there not been any more displays at the library, there are the changes to the FRL agreement that were pushed through by this board, as well as appointments to the library boards in both Macon and Jackson County that have raised some eyebrows. The recent quiet is because of a new suggested strategy that has come out with this information that I got, and it directly concerns this body. The suggestion is that somehow the commissioners and county managers of both Macon and Jackson Counties coordinate behind the scenes to organize a surprise simultaneous exit from the FRL, ostensibly for financial reasons. They would like this done quietly so as to avoid the pushback and drama from those labeled the lunatic left and cult activists, indicating an ideological motive versus any real financial consideration. I would simply like to ask this board that if there is ever a consideration to exit the FRL, that it be done openly and honestly, and allow the public to participate in that conversation. I would strongly prefer... I would strongly prefer to hear this board flatly reject any consideration of withdrawal, and that the eight-decade cooperative arrangement continue into the future. Thank you.
Elizabeth Short.
Hi.
Hi.
Elizabeth Short, 9574 Georgia Road Auto. I'm talking about animal control myself, and a lot of what I wanted to say already got touched on, thank goodness. But as far as you were going to hire a new dog officer, and you agreed to that back in December, I just want to reiterate that I have called for two months with an abandoned dog and got nothing. No help, nothing, because they have no help at this place. They need more workers. When you went from being open all day from 1:00 to 4:00, if you're a retail shop and you want to sell your goods, you need to be open. We want these animals to get adopted. They need to be open. When you had... Thank you. When you had the position... You had someone filling the position, right, for the clean-in-the-kennels before? Did that person leave?
We had three officers a couple months back in Illinois.
No, I'm talking about clean-in-the-kennels.
They cleaned the kennels.
They cleaned the kennels. So they're not coming to the calls, and there are dogs out there. The dog that I ended up with was dangerous. It was a total liability. She loved me, but biting a lot of people. They're not doing the behavioral that they need to do with these animals, and they're letting go home with people that are not trained. So when you don't have... They have the intake of 59 animals last month when you have no kennel cleaner. They figure to feed the dog to the animal and to clean the kennels, 15 minutes per animal. That's an eight-hour shift. And they've got... That's on, say, 30 animals, and we're looking at 59. When you had the cleaner before, in 2020, you were doing 600 animals a year. Now you're doing 1,400. And we have a huge, huge problem in this county with animals getting dumped. And I would like to see... I think it was you that said in the December meeting, why do we need another one when they have no power to do anything? And there is a little discrepancy between the county, you know, laws and citations and what you're going to do compared to state. So we need dog officers that have the power to do something. When we had that dog being beaten with a pipe and a shovel not too long ago, it took two days to get somebody out there, and I understand that they were needing sheriffs to go with them, correct? So we need our sheriffs to back us up and help these animals. I mean, if you're going to do a job, any job worth doing is worth doing right. Do we agree? Also, with less people working at the shelter, I don't know if everyone knows about it, but with the comment she was making about the attack, one dog ripped another dog's jaw off, and then both dogs were euthanized. If we had better people, better trained, and let them do the job they're supposed to do in not cleaning kennels, we don't need just one kennel cleaner. We need at least two. And we have about 30 people who volunteer, but we're all old. I can't lift shit. Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. I can't lift things. I can't do what I want to do to help out, but I keep going and adopting. Anyway. Thank you.
I am Ashley Higgs. I live at 5391 Silver Road, Franklin, and I am also the manager of Appalachian Animal Rescue Center. So without animal control, I can't do my job. We are a 501(c)(3), so we are not run by the county. We are also a closed intake facility, which means if I see an aggressive dog, I don't have to take it in. But Macon County Animal Services, they are the ones that deal with animal abuse, with dog aggression. Our building holds 105 animals. We do not have only three staff. We do not have only three staff members. We don't only have four staff members. We have seven to take care of that amount of animals. So, and we, of course, we are not trained either, but we're not, you know, people don't look for us to deal with dog aggression. I, back in 2011, 2012, 2000, I started at Macon County Animal Services. I was a volunteer. Back in those times, they did not need volunteers to clean the kennels. They didn't have the amount of animals. As it's already been stated, animal surrenders, stray animals is on the rise. And that is due to a lack of education and lack of spay and neuter. My dream is for Macon County to be a spay and neuter county. Bonham B. County is a spay and neuter county. Now, in order to do that, you have to have three vets that are willing to do low-cost spay and neuter. No vet in Franklin is going to get $500 for spay and neuter. Macon County cannot afford it. They can't. I'm booked up till April with spay and neuter, and that is at $50. But with the rise, I cannot put my spay and neuter dream without Macon County Animal Services. I need people that will do the citations. So you have a person, and how that works is you have a person, they have a, you know, not altered animal. Animal Control will issue citations. First offense, $50. Second offense, $200. Third offense, you know, $500. And the county also makes money from that. And that makes people go, okay, you know, having this, two litters of puppies is not worth it. Because, I'll tell you, if any of you have ever cleaned up puppy poop, I have a litter of nine babies right now with a mom, and that is 10 animals right now that does not have a home. And it doesn't have to be that way. And now luckily, they get loving every day. I was just at Animal Control today, and they're like, oh my God, I would love to love on some puppies. So all of us, we love animals. And I know Animal Services, anyone there, we're not there for people, they're not there for people to scream at them. They cannot do their job of answering calls because they take care of animals. Us personally, we do not have volunteers cleaning the kennels. I do not want to put volunteers in the danger of having to go in a kennel, and so us employees do that. If any of you guys want to come walk dogs, we'll do that. You can't walk the aggressive ones. But I need, we definitely back Macon County Animal Services. That will never change. They are our friends, and I need more officers so they can issue citations on animal abuse instead of people calling us, wanting us to go out. We legally cannot go out. So these are my backup. These are my friends, and I need them to have more friends and more staff, because poor Isabel, she has to answer my text messages all the time, and she's probably tired of me. But that is it. Just know that Animal Control is, Macon County desperately needs it, because I know they don't have enough staff to go down 28 towards Wahala to answer a call. There's no way. That's 45 minutes out of, out of the way. And when you've got to clean kennels, what's more important, an animal's health or going to someone who just let their dog go? But these guys need us. I need them, so that's it.
Betsy Based.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you for letting us talk to you about our concerns and being open to listening. We really appreciate that. I'm just going to say, I'd love a three-minute time limit. I'd love to have, you know, 15 people be able to speak rather than nine. So it's always like, am I going to get in? So just if you're taking any votes, I'm for that. Second thing, if you're up for it, I think it'd be great if the Sheriff's Department actually did the animal control part of it, of being the officer, going out, taking people, because nobody's going to pay attention to, you know, us. And I'm a volunteer with the Macon County Animal Shelter. On Thursday, I am transporting a 130-pound dog, Rottweiler, to Asheville to get her fixed. I'm taking her because she trusts me. She don't trust everybody, and so that's one of those sort of on-the-edge dogs that not everybody can handle. And it's kind of funny to see me with the big ones because I'm kind of small. We totally need more people to help do these jobs, and I know that you've got some plans in the works, and I appreciate all that you are doing to make that happen, and I think that you're taking it seriously. I would be okay with a nonprofit running it, too. I've run many nonprofits, so I know nonprofits can be run really well. I would like to see a nonprofit run with full county support, that, you know, the building, the infrastructure, what it takes to make that happen so that you're not just abandoning it. You want to give away some of the responsibility of it? I get that, but don't abandon it. Do not do that. I'm going to go away from that because I think everybody spoke really well about all of those things. I want to just bring to your attention sunshine laws. I know you know what sunshine laws are. From the North Carolina Department of Justice, the General Assembly has declared that by public policy, North Carolina, that hearings, deliberations, and actions of public bodies be conducted publicly. I know you know this. I know you don't need reminding this, but I think some members of the public need reminding that members of public bodies may not hold gatherings or communications to evade the spirit and purpose of the open meeting laws. So just in case you didn't get copies of this, which has been available out and about in the public, this is an email that was sent by someone in the community. Sorry, I didn't bring one for everybody. I'll give you one now. And I outlined the part that says, leaving the FRL needs to be discussed extensively by commissioners in Macon and Jackson behind the scenes with a surprise decision to leave when the time comes, just as Yancey voted unanimously to leave their regional system. And then it goes on to, say, make disparaging remarks about other people in the community. So I just want you to have your own copy of that and know that the rest of us all have it, and so we know that people are advocating for you to do illegal things, and I trust you won't. Thank you.
Autumn Lucas.
Hi, everybody. I'm going to try to get in under five. My name is Autumn Lucas. I'm from Scaly Mountain, North Carolina. First of all, I want to thank everyone who's a volunteer and who works at the shelter, Dr. Joanne. I myself have been a volunteer with animals at the shelter and elsewhere for decades. And the first thing I'm going to ask is just maybe a rhetorical question. Why not just shoot the dogs strays? Why not just drown kittens? Isn't that what our grandparents did, right? Just take them out back, put a bullet in their head, done, problem solved. But we don't do that. I think it was Gandhi who said, "The greatness of a nation can be judged by how it treats its animals." Why? Why? Because animals really are God's most innocent. Animal welfare and the issues around animal welfare are truly nonpartisan. Look at this room. They bring together people from all walks of life, different class, race, political affiliation. It doesn't matter. It gets to the heart of how we're good and how we care for the most innocent among us. And I don't care that my tax dollars support whatever it amounts to what, a can, you know, a tank of gas probably any year. But the fact is that we can either lead, it was Ashley, yeah, and really be an outlier in a place, a county that people look to. Macon County cares. Let's see what they're doing. How are they doing it? How are they making it? Or for lack of caring, lack of imagination, we can go, it's somebody else's problem. Just take them out back. No, we care. We care. Macon County cares, and we have an opportunity and we have an obligation to God's most innocent that can't fend, that don't have voices. It's not just cats and dogs. It's animal welfare at large. There should be great pride in taking care of our animals because it shows that we are great and merciful. And the work that I've seen these people do, it makes me cry, you know, you know. Every time I go in there, I say, you're doing God's work. They have two people this coming week, two people on staff, and anybody who's a volunteer knows it's a lot of S-H-I-T, cat, dog, that's a lot of food. And then what gets lost is the opportunity to interact with the animals, and that's where the joy is. I don't know, Lori, if you have animals, but that's where the joy is. Animals help heal, and this country needs healing. We need that connection, and if this little shelter gives us that opportunity, sign me up. Well, how much do I, I don't care. Give me all the food at the Dollar General, I'll take it to them. So what makes us great is our caring for the most innocent. Let's be imaginative. Let's be brave and bold and go, you know what? Let's do it. Let's lead the way, not be the scared, oh, money, da-da-da-da. Yeah, those are concerns, and they're valid, but we can figure it out. And that's all.
All right, this next one, you're going to have to bear with me.
I couldn't help either.
I'm afraid they may be a doctor. Last name MZ. I can't read the first name, I'm sorry.
Let's see. Number nine. Do you remember the last name starts with an M? Okay, that sounded good. What was the first name?
Robert.
Robert, it may be you.
I think he's on further down, to be honest with you.
I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to be funny. I don't, I really can't read it.
That's, that's not easy.
Robert, see if this is number nine. See, let Robert see number nine. I'll see if that's him on number nine.
Yes.
All right. What's that, Robert?
Robert.
Yeah, Robert.
Mr. Robert, please read your name into the record book and address.
There are some people here who are not going to want to hear what I have to say.
Say it real fast. Name and address.
Robert Malanson. An address, it's 214 Bradley Road in Franklin.
Thank you.
I've been volunteering at Animal Control for about four years now, almost four years. And the reason why I volunteer there is because I understand the anxiety and the stress and suffering of the dogs that are trapped in those cages. My God, do those dogs suffer. You know, I've got, I've got four dogs myself, and I'm hiking with them twice a day off leash, and they're wonderful animals because they get all that energy through their system. So they're completely different animals as far as, you know, their happiness and their well-being and all that. It troubles me so much to see the animals trapped in those concrete bunkers at Animal Control. That's why I go there. I've been going there for four years now to try to get those dogs out just for a short time and walk them. You know, it doesn't do a lot because it's only like a 15-minute walk per dog, and there's only, we've only got about three or four regular volunteers that walk dogs. So here's what a lot of people are not going to want to hear. You know, I understand, I understand the anxiety and the misery of those dogs that are trapped in those cages. And if, in my opinion, if you cannot adopt those dogs and if they're suffering the way they're suffering, trapped in them cages, I would rather see them put to sleep, simply put to sleep out of their misery. You know, if we had, if we had a lot of people to volunteer to walk those dogs, that would be wonderful because then they'd have some quality of life and they wouldn't suffer for hours and hours and days and days and days trapped in those cages. But we don't have that. There's about four or five, and I know every, every person in this room, or four or five are regular walkers. I love all these people, and that's all we've gotten. They can only give like maybe 15 minutes per dog, and that's every other day. So those dogs are trapped in those concrete bunkers for 48 hours. The staff, they try to get them out a little bit and put them in the, in the yards for a little bit. I don't know how much they, how successful they are at doing that, but the dogs are stressed. I know from having my own dogs, the dogs need to get out a couple of times a day, and they need to run. They need to open up and run. I know that's unheard of, with a lot of people who just walk around with a dog suppressed on the end of a leash, but dogs need to run. So saying that, try to understand the suffering and the misery and the anxiety of the dogs that are trapped in those cages at Animal Control. And I would just like to see, here's what I, what I almost forgot to say. When I, when I first adopted my first dog there nine years ago, they were putting dogs down at 13 days, which was way too soon. That was the management that they had there then. They got a couple different managements since that, but they were putting dogs down at 13 days, and that was too soon. Now, the culture there is keeping the dogs alive way too long, in my opinion. I would rather see some of these dogs that have been there week after week after week, maybe six weeks, simply put out of their misery, simply put to sleep so they're no longer suffering. And again, that's the reason why I, at 74 years old, still go down there three days a week just to get those dogs out of them cages. I don't know if I forgot to say anything, but I'm going to shut my mouth.
Heather Johnson.
Hello, I'm Heather Johnson. I'm from Auto. I'm here to express my acute concerns about the transparency regarding the selection criteria and schedule for selecting the Macon County Public Library and Fontana Regional Library Board trustee members. Recently, the county commissioners denied the request for a second term of a Macon County Public Library Board member with no explanation. Then another application was pulled from over a year ago. There was no announcement of the opening, nor did they take the time to allow for applications. This coupled with the obvious inexperience or deliberate bad faith actions of those on the board shows why it is crucial that we have clear criteria for board appointments and applications are vetted properly for their ability and experience. We also saw the same exact thing happen recently at the Jackson County Commissioner meeting as well. Also regarding privatization of animal control, all we need is for the county commissioners to do their job and pass a budget that appropriately funds this public service and allows for the animal service officers to appropriately use their citation power and not rely on volunteers. Thank you.
Heather Dombrosky.
It's Dombrosky.
Dombrosky, I'm sorry, his name.
That's all right.
We got Heather.
Well, you all received that letter from Ms. Based, but I feel like it's important that the public hear that letter and maybe those folks at home listen to that letter. Quote, "Exiting the FRL must be justified as economic reasons. Less blowback and leftist drama. It's all about the financials. If a county leaves the FRL, it's going to require much work to coordinate, probably the county manager of the exiting counties." If Jack- If Jackson and Macon can both simultaneously pull out of the FRL, then the FRL ceases to exist and all FRL assets are divided equally between the three counties. This seems to be the best route if Jackson and Macon teamed up and worked through the exit together, also, and provided cover for each other by both leaving for financial reasons. Leaving the FRL needs to be discussed extensively by commissioners in Macon and Jackson behind the scenes with a surprise decision to leave when the time comes, just as Yancey voted unanimously to leave their regional system when the regional library director was conveniently out of town. If this possibility of exiting FRL is being discussed out in the open, the lunatic left will mobilize and come out in full force with all their tired lies to create a huge controversy. It must be kept behind the scenes until action. Commissioners from Jackson and Macon should have all their economic reasons well organized before the decision. There is always the possibility that some of the current library staff will give the community a big middle finger and just walk away and quit rather than become staff at a newly created independent county library. At the very least, judging by the behavior, judging by the FRL leadership's past behavior, these activists will not want to cooperate. We must be ready to paint the FRL leadership as unwilling to serve the community and have proven they desire control and activism over service to the public. In the information wars, the public needs to be assured that an independent county library will meet and exceed the quality of the current FRL system. A few well-worded statements from the commissioners' board and county manager's office might offer reassuring insight as to why the county will save money and how the library experience will be better. Effective communication will prevent a lot of controversy. But the big question, how to do that? Hmm. Well, that assertion that backroom deals should be made without transparency and phony economic reasons, that's drama. For those of you on this board that may still agree with the sentiment of that email, may I remind you of actual, real needs this county is facing. Franklin, East Franklin School, the rec park, animal services, senior services, supporting the educational needs of our kids. Why would we spend energy commandeering a library? I ask this, I ask this because if you are still of the mindset that this would be beneficial to fix something that is not only not broken but is operating fantastically, not only for Macon County but our neighboring counties, while there are very real and actual needs in our county, if you are still on the same bandwagon as the author of that letter, you are clearly not here to serve the people and instead push your own agenda, desiring control and activism, just as that letter stated. I hope that's not the case.
Andrew Garrison.
My name's Andrew Garrison, 275 Clear Sky Drive, Franklin, North Carolina. Excuse me, a little nervous. I got a few handouts here. There's a, over on Haola Church Road, right off 28th, there's a kennel being developed. There's an email here from the owner of the property, and this outlines basically the location of the kennel being built. So it's right in the middle of our neighborhood. It's going to cause a lot of problems for us. It's going to possibly cause problems for the children in the neighborhood. We're just concerned this is actually happening and there's no, without any zoning laws in the county, there's really nothing for us to do. My understanding right now, there's a permit that's on file for the ground disturbances that they're doing. No structure's been built yet. That ground disturbance permit, oh. The ground disturbance permit was basically put on file and everything, and I believe it's actually filed under for residential property, if I'm not mistaken. I don't know that for sure. I got that from a neighbor. Just like this email that you actually see here, I got from, you know, basically third party as well. We could ask the owners themselves if we need to. All I'm asking is that basically the commissioners take a look at this, see whether or not you would actually want this built in your neighborhood or not, and make a judgment. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Chairman, the 45-minute period has ended.
Yeah. Perfect timing. That's the last one on the list.
Chairman of five, if it's appropriate, I'd like to make a few comments after.
Can we ask questions?
No, I, I'm just going to address the, the board and the general public. This is not for a debate. But just so, some of you people, I have three rescue dogs at my house. These dogs sleep in my bed, okay? So I love animals. That's number one. Number two, when I bring up an issue in this county, you see what happens? It opens up an open conversation with a problem in this county that needs to be addressed. Now, going back to the animal shelter, I received an email and a phone call of the problems that was at the animal shelter. I immediately went over to the animal shelter and identified all the things that everyone was talking about. I immediately called the county manager and said, "What's going on at the animal shelter?" Well, they were in the process of working, okay? And some of these things, and I'm hoping that everything that was on that list has been repaired by now. So I'm not looking for a medal here. I'm trying to do my job to make this county better for all of us, whether it be for us humans, animals, or whatever. But when I have numerous calls, and I know in my own experience what some of these animals are enduring out here from these people, and the animal control officers have been contacted numerous times and nothing happens. We talk about the dog at Lake Emery. That, that dog was out there running those cars. That is grounds for picking that dog up. When I went in to see the people that called about this, I came back out and that dog was still chasing cars, cars going everywhere. We can't go on that property to take that dog. That dog's not out there. It's on, it's on public property. And I watched you pull up to where that dog was at. Then, when I go in to see these people, the real problem is, is that dog goes onto their property and chases their donkey. And they have called for two solid months with every organization in Macon County trying to get help to protect their donkey. Instead of them pulling out a gun and shooting that dog, they relied on the powers-to-be to make a stance to help them, and it failed. I know of a dog right now that everybody in the neighborhood has called. This poor dog is in a 10 by 10 pen. The only time anybody ever goes to that dog is every once in a while, they'll take a bowl of water. They give that dog no attention. They have another dog. The other dog lives in the house. That is animal abuse, any way you want to look at it. But Animal Control cannot do anything about it. So my deal, I've said to you before, the animal services, the animal shelter, I have high praises for what y'all do for these animals. And yes, if you need help, by all means, as soon as I left.
Seventeen months, a dog thrown out.
Wait, 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 wait. Doctor, you've, you've, this is, this is my time. I just want y'all to understand who I am as a human being and a county, an elected county commissioner. I have these animals at heart. As soon as I left your meeting, I called the manager. He said, "We're going to work on this." I had a meeting with Ms. Kathy. So we came up with the plan to get the animal shelter some, some help over there to take care of these animals. But in my mind, we still have to have something done with Animal Control. And is it best to be turned over to the Sheriff of Macon County? These are things we're researching right now. Because it's not for us, it's for the betterment of these animals that are being abused. And that's where I stand, and I, and I appreciate all of you coming in and showing all your support and interest in this issue. And I promise you, this board, we are looking into this to make a better situation for these animals. So thank you.
Thank you, Johnny. Just for the record, just for the record, I'd like to reiterate that we just signed a 10-year bipartisan good-faith contract with Fontana Regional Library. And I don't, I don't know where these emails are coming from. I hate to say, I really don't care. We signed a 10-year good-faith agreement, and I feel like that's where, that's where we're at with it. So I really don't even put any merit into that email, okay? Just for the record. This time, I'm looking for adjustments and/or approval of the agenda. All right, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve of the agenda.
Your motion?
Second.
Commissioner, second by Commissioner Antoine. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please signify by raising your right arm stating aye.
Aye.
All right, 5-0, Ms. Tanny. Reports and presentations. Fiscal year '25-'26 budget kickoff of Mr. In Term County Manager Warren.
So Mr. Chairman, I don't have a whole lot to, to start off with, and Lori will have some more information to bring you up to speed. Basically, what we decided to do this year, we're going to kind of split our kickoff information into two meetings. Tonight, you're going to kind of get the overview of where we're at and where we think we're going to be. Next meeting in March, which is March the 11th, if I'm looking at my calendar correctly. Mitch with Davenport, folks will come and give us an update or report on our capital improvement plan, where we stand on our big projects, and kind of give us the big picture look on where we sit for this upcoming year. Lori's also going to pass out a, a budget, proposed budget calendar. We're going to try everything possible to have you, the proposed budget, back at the regular meeting in May. So that will give you a full month of time between that meeting, the regular meeting in June, schedule, to schedule your work sessions and make sure if we have to run past that meeting in June for any kind of work sessions, that'll, that'll still give us plenty of time to get a, a budget in place by the, the end of June. I will say, from my perspective, one of the things that I would like from this board, and it doesn't necessarily have to be tonight, maybe next month when we meet, I would like to know some basic priorities. I kind of want to know where you want to head, what do you want to look for this year, what are you looking for out of this budget? So hopefully I can get a proposed budget in front of you that we're not going to meet everybody's needs, but it will meet the majority of, of what we think we need to do, the majority of the needs that the board has seen, the majority of the needs of the folks that are, that are sitting out here in the audience tonight. But just basically some general direction for me to see, to see what you're looking for. So that's basically all I have tonight, unless you have any questions with me at this point.
Thank you, Warren. Now, while she's making her way up there, gentlemen, I guess it'd be a good time to maybe come prepare next month for some priorities, just as interim manager suggested, and maybe some direction. So please be thinking about that.
Good evening. So as I do every year, we just try to give you a brief update of where we are financially. Of course, we're here today, February 11th, but we have, you know, posted everything to our general ledger through the end of December. And so I'll just talk a little bit about revenues, expenditures, as of that point in time, and then also talk about sales tax specifically because there is a three-month lag there, so I'll only be showing you five months of data. So kind of got ahead of myself, but we'll talk about sales tax, property and motor vehicle taxes, the general fund revenues, general fund expenditures, and then the debt. So the first slide here is our sales tax. So as I was saying, there is a lag between the time that retailers collect the tax, they submit it to the Department of Revenue, then when we finally get it from the Department of Revenue. So this slide shows July through November retail sales. So this would be funds that we received in October through February. So as you can see, there's a slight decline fiscal year '25, which is our current year that we're in, compared to fiscal year '24. We're down about $81,000 or 1%. Just as a comparison, last fiscal year, same time period compared to the year before, we were $32,000 to the good, or about 4 tenths of a percent. And just for further comparison, the year before that one, we were up $848,000 or 12.64% higher. So unfortunately, on sales tax, we're kind of, you know, I think we had, with COVID hitting, we kind of had our high peaks of some double-digit growth year over year. But we're seeing that, you know, that growth is gone, unfortunately. And like I said, this year, we're seeing just a slight decline of 1% for the first five months. You know, hopefully this summer will rebound. December sales aren't in yet, so hopefully we had some good Christmas sales. And then, of course, moving into spring and summer, you know, hopefully we'll have a lot of tourism that will, you know, turn this number around. But that's the data we have at this point, is five months worth.
Ms. Lori, hang on just a second.
Yes.
Commissioner Shields made a very good suggestion.
Yes.
If anybody's wanting to leave and not be rude right now, it might be a good time just to, to have an exit. If you guys, you guys are all welcome to stick around and hang out, but for those of you, try not to be rude.
Good call, Sheriff Young. I can't take any credit. Former Chairman Shields. Thanks, sir. Hey, I saw you waving back there.
Sorry, Ms. Lori, sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry to state your thunder.
Hey, you have to go all over again. Blame that on this.
Sorry, you got a new job.
Oh, don't, don't, right yet, not yet.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that was me.
It's nice to meet you.
Bye, everybody.
And good call, fellas.
Lori said, "Waited all year for this moment."
They looked snuggly. They looked snuggly after.
Yeah, I'll have to cut the air back up. After my presentation, though. After my presentation.
All right, Ms. Lori.
Okay.
Please, please, please carry it back up.
So does anybody have any question about sales tax, how they function, how they work? All right, so the next slide, we'll talk about our property and motor vehicle taxes. So this represents all tax collection revenues that the county takes in, whether that be current year taxes levied or prior year taxes, any interest, advertising and attorney fees on delinquent collections. So this one, I have positive news, as you can see from the slides. So this fiscal year, we have brought in $29.7 million. Last fiscal year was about $28.7. So we're, we're up a little over $1 million compared to last fiscal year, so that's great news. One contributing factor to that is the collection rate this year is 83.56% compared to 82.16% last fiscal year. So kudos to the tax department and kudos to the citizens for, for paying their taxes.
That answers my question on trends.
Yeah. Okay, the next slide is just talking about the general fund revenues as a whole. So, last year at this point in time, we were sitting at $40.1 million of revenue. This year, we're at $42.5 million. So, we're about $2.36 million overall, you know, more revenues brought in this year for the first six months versus last year. So, as I mentioned in the previous slide, part of that, of course, is the property tax. Part of that $2.36 million increase is due to that $1 million more that's been, you know, brought in over last year. The other piece of that is the Health Department has a line item called Medicaid Cost Settlement Revenues, and that, for this year versus last year, is $1.27 million more. And that is a program, that's money that they do a contract with a company and do a report every year, and then they get a Medicaid reimbursement. And then, those monies they bring in, they have to use them in the programs which they were earned. And so, from time to time, they'll amend their budget to appropriate those Medicaid cost settlements in the appropriate areas to spend them, again, where they were earned. So, again, positive, you know, overall positive news there, that the revenues are indeed up. But again, those were kind of the two major contributing factors as to why they were up over last fiscal year. So, any questions on revenues as a whole? All right, the next slide is just talking about our general fund expenditures as of December 31st. Last year at this time, we were at $30.3 million. This year, we're a little over $29 million, so expenditures are down a little. The main reason there, last year, as of December 31st, we had some capital items that we had encumbered, which means we issued a purchase order for some vehicles and equipment and various things. This fiscal year at this point in time, we've not issued those as of yet. That's the main reason for that decline. I would expect probably by the end of the fiscal year, you know, expenditures will catch back up and be a more normal end, you know, as compared to last year. But again, positive news, you know, it's always good news to hear that, hey, revenues are up, expenditures are down, you know. So, any questions on those? All right, this last slide is just our debt, and I apologize that it's very small, especially for the audience. Typically, I have little numbers above each of these bars, but with our debt now extending out to 2045, they were kind of jumbled on top of one another. But the picture paints, you know, the picture tells the tale, paints the picture. So, but I will tell you that for fiscal year '25, which is our current fiscal year that we're in right now, our debt service payments are just a little over $5 million. And you'll see in '26, we jump, and that jumps up to $9.5 million. The reason for that increase is current fiscal year, we took on the Franklin High School debt back in September, September 26, we closed on that debt. Our first interest payment is due April 1st, 2025, so that falls in this fiscal year. So, that's just one interest payment. When we move into '26, we will have a principal payment due October 1st of '25, and an interest payment due at that same time, and then come April 1st of 2026, we'll also have another interest payment due. So, that's why that spike in the debt payments, is because, again, we only have one interest payment we're paying current year. Next year, we'll have two interest payments and the principal payment. And that's all I have, unless y'all have any questions, be glad to try to answer them.
Let me ask you this, and I don't know if you can even answer it, but the grant funds we receive from the state?
Yes.
Is that a lump sum amount, or do we use that kind of as a pay-go?
Top of the $62 million for Franklin High?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, we actually have an annual report due by April 1st. You know, we did the loan back in September. So, so far, the money we've been paying out, I've been drawing down from the loan funds, but I need to start drawing down from those grant funds, and so I'm going to start that with this January payments that we've made, well, I'm sorry, we're in February. The February payments that we're making, I'll start drawing down those, because they really kind of want you to draw down, you know, some of their money, and then they have, they understand that we have, you know, loan money, so we want to draw down some of the grant money, some of the loan money.
All right.
All right.
Well, thank you, Ms. Lori.
Thank you.
Awesome. All right. Update on the Franklin High School project, Jack Morgan and Mr. Joey. Carol Daniel.
Well, gentlemen, we've partnered with the right team to build this high school, I tell you. We're off with the bang these guys are, and I couldn't be more pleased. Just going to head on a couple of things, then give it to Joey King. He's the superintendent of the project. He knows every nut and bolt for the whole thing. But if you look at the Higdon property, the most noticeable thing they've done is to the right of the Higdon property is where the laydown area is going to be, that's where they're going to store materials, and on the left is where the employee parking, the worker parking is going to be. Because once they get going with the buildings, there are going to be 100 so workers there every day.
Wow.
So, it's going to be a pretty busy place. Also, they'll have to cross the road to get to work, so be careful down there. I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Joey King, Superintendent Carol Daniels.
Yeah, today. They had us some slides here, and we do a, once a week, we do a drone flight, so it's sort of like a time lapse, you can look at that drone flight and see what we've done, what we've accomplished, and the direction we're going. Right now, we're in full demo mode. You can see it's with the stadium, trying to demo the old stadium out and get ready to start removing dirt from there back towards the Slope on Frog Town. Everything's moving along as scheduled, other than the weather, but we work around that. But everything's active there, no holdups, no budget impacts, schedule impacts of any means, just everything's going good and finally get to work. Y'all have any questions that, and you can see, like I said, through those photos, and they're published every week, so when we do a drone photo, it's basically a bird's-eye view of the whole thing, and it gives you a better idea, rather than driving around, that you can look at that and see every nut and bolt, every piece that goes in, and throughout the project, at the end, we can build a time lapse, and it'll basically show the building being constructed from start to finish, how things change, and then by the end, by the time we demo the old campus and new parking lots, it'll just all change as we go. But that's going right, everything's going good, and I think we'll have a great project.
Couple of things, Joey. I hear you say we're on budget and we're on time, and that's very important for me. Can you help elaborate on some timeframes? I mean, will they, when will the track be ready? When will the stadium be ready?
Our first date, we're going to have, the first turnover will be the football field. Well, let me back up. This summer, we're going to do the student parking at the bottom of the field, just because the school uses that. So, we're going to make sure during the summer months, when the kids are not there, we'll go ahead and put that parking lot in and bring it up to the new design. The next key date will be April, May of '26, we'll turn that field over, the stadium and all its components, back to the school, where they can have football there, they can have their PE classes there, all that.
Right, stadium, everything.
Everything. From the south side of the gymnasium, that plaza, and that from Press Box towards Waya Street, will all be occupied by the campus. The summer of '27, or April, May of '27, we'll turn the campus over, so they'll move from the old campus into the new one. We'll start demo at that point, if the teachers leave and deoccupy that building, and we'll start that demo process that summer, so we can get demoed away from that active campus. It's one thing to build a school next to an active campus, a whole different story to demo one. So, our goal is to start moving away from it, so by April of '28, all of those parking lots, practice field, all of that be complete, our substantial data is April of '28. So, that's our deadlines or our critical path.
Are you going to pave the student parking lot this summer, or is it going to be gravelled?
No, it'll all be paved.
It's done, done.
It'll be done all the way, that parking lot actually expands into the old field footprint, because the field moves towards Phillips and away from Waya, so there'll be handicap parking at the end towards the field. It actually expands more parking places, so we'll go ahead and get that done, so that it don't interrupt school next year. And that's key to what we do, is we try not to interfere with what's going on there every day, so.
Mr. Chairman, I want to add one of the, actually a couple of things that are off-campus that are also affected by this, that you'll see coming up when you talk about those milestones. We're already working with DOT on the Porter Street intersection there where Panther Drive comes in, which will be the main intersection. That'll require some redesign, a turning lane, whatever the design ends up being there, there'll be some changes to that intersection. So, we're already working with them, with Carol Daniel, to make sure we get that in process, so that's dealt with ahead of time. But obviously, there will be some impact to the public there a little bit, because that's a fairly well-traveled road through there, but you'll see that coming up reasonably soon, year-ish or less. There's also going to be some impacts on Waya Street with some drainage lines there that need to be fixed to solve a lot of these problems with the campus, and this is stuff that's off-campus, but it affects campus, so therefore, there's some work that's going to take place there. And then, the final off-campus thing, you saw the Phillips Street intersection right there to the right with the blue on the video, the steep hill there with the intersection of Waya Street. There's some funds in your budget to address that Phillips Street intersection that's really hard to turn right and come back on to Waya Street. That'll be the very last thing we end up doing, because that's the construction interest, and we can't really mess that up until the very end. So, we're going to kind of wrap all the way around with some other stuff that Joey's going to help us work through to make sure we make this a really well-integrated project when it's all said and done.
Got to be seamless.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say one thing about Joey. I've had the opportunity to, Joey's a PR person, we go to Rotary, go to business advisory councils and things like that, and he's been very accessible. Joey, I want to say I appreciate it, and meet the people in the community, and we've got some meetings still coming on, and we'll do it right. Thank you, Joey.
Yeah, we're full transparent, so if we know, y'all know, that's just how we operate, so thank y'all for y'all's time.
Thank you.
All right. Jack Morgan, update on Micking County Library project.
Mr. Jack Morgan actually nominated me to give this update, since I was out there this morning.
All right, it's Warren K.
So, just a real quick update that Jack will help keep me straight on, on the library. The work actually has already started at the library. If you haven't been by there, there's a lot of stuff going on in the front of the building with Porter Cachet. The bad part, or the deteriorated part of the posts have been removed. That whole structure has been stabilized and pulled back up against the building. There's some temporary bracing that's in there now. We did do some looking at the foundations, just to make sure that this is a long-term solution. We had some work done to make sure the foundations that the posts were sitting on were appropriate, and we found out today, everything's good with them. So, now, we're ready to move on with bringing the rock structure back up to the posts, so that that thing is more stabilized, and when that happens, the workers will move to the inside and start working their way through, I guess you call it the atrium or the middle of the building there, working on that roof process. We've got a process worked out with Abby and the folks at the library, so that, right now, they're using an alternate entrance. The inside work will be cordoned off, so we can work while they're still having folks in the library, so we've coordinated all that with them to make sure the library stays open. So, basically, that's moving along pretty well at the moment. Jack, is there anything? Oh, the other part, the other part of this equation, if you remember, back in your budget this year, you had already planned some funds in the capital improvement plan to do some roof work at the library already. We held off on that because we didn't want to put a new roof structure in, then have a lot of construction going on up there, and the new construction damaged the new roof that we just put in. I think we're at a point now, Travis Waldrup and I talked about it last week, I think we're at a point now to go ahead and then open that up for bids on finishing the rest of the roof that you've already budgeted for and planned for, that's not part of this project at the library, so we're going to go ahead and move with that. So, just as soon as this part finishes, we can follow in there and finish the rest of the roof of that library and hopefully be done with that project.
Did we get a detail from the architect for that roof? Were there some discrepancies with the ventilation?
Um, yes, well, yes, we got what we needed. There's still some exploratory stuff that they're doing there, and Jack, correct me if I'm wrong, we're going to, when we get up there, we're going to check that, and then if there's more issues, we'll go back and fix it, but we think we know what it is.
Yeah, we're going to find out that for sure. What we've got to do, excuse me, is pull the metal back on the top. That's the reason we're not putting that TPO roof, flat roof on yet, because we don't want to hit it with that metal. And see how much deterioration there is there. We think that if we seal that off, for sure, because we don't know if those SIPs panels are just buddied up like that or what, we're going to cut a curve and seal it with foam, seal over the top of it, put another vapor retarder on the top of it, hopefully, that's going to take care of the problem. What we don't know is how much damage has been done to the materials there now. So, that's the big if. And everybody knew that the Porter Cachet was kind of leaning this way, it was 10 inches out of level. Had to jack it up 10 inches to get it back to level, just to let you know what had happened.
Thank you, Jack. Thank you, Warren. All right. Consideration of surplus property offer, 651 East Main Street. Mr. Counselor?
All right, so we previously presented an offer last month that was, the board didn't think was sufficient to consider starting the upset bid process. Since then, we've received two more bids, the most recent one was this afternoon. This afternoon, we received a bid for $150,000 to start the bid process on that. Again, this process is one where, at this point, all you would be doing is authorizing the upset bid process. It would then be published in the newspaper and advertised for upset bid. Anybody that wanted to could then upset that bid by 10% or more, and that bid would be a revolving bid with upset bids and publishes, publishing until a 10-day period had passed where no upset bid were made. So, that can be an ongoing process that could last for months, depending on the pleasure of the board, whether or not it chooses to proceed with advertising this property for bid. Again, this is the old gold station down near the rear.
All right, thank you, sir. Gentlemen, any input?
And once again, the value of that property is what?
Got it in my file, I believe it was two, not much, two.
Yeah, the property is $196, $241,260. The property is valued at $196,840, and the building's valued at $44,420. So, I'll just say, I think that it would be a disservice if we just jumped right into accepting an offer on that building. I think that we need to do our due diligence. We own the property. I think we traded a piece of property for it, so we don't really have a whole lot in it. But we have departments that are looking for homes, such as veterans, maybe even housing, where we could create some more space for maybe Board of Elections. You know, there's some places that we can move some things around, and I just think it would be...
And once again, the value of that property is what?
Got it in my file. I believe it was two, not much, two.
Yeah, the property is $196. The property is valued at $196,840, and the building's valued at $44,420.
So I'll just say, I think that it would be a disservice if we just jumped right into accepting an offer on that building. I think that we need to do our due diligence. We own the property. I think we traded a piece of property for it. So we don't really have a whole lot in it. But we have departments that are looking for homes, such as veterans, maybe even housing, where we could create some more space for maybe board of elections. You know, there's some places that we can, we can move some things around, and I just think it would be premature for us to just jump into something like that. I think we should take our time and explore what that would take to get us to the point of putting another department in there. And if it's feasible, and if it's not, then maybe we think about selling that.
Well, I mean, the conversations, you know, we've always had is if we have a piece of property out there that someone's interested in, by all means, place an offer. But we sort of, this board sort of established a tax value to these, and to be honest with you, I'm not, I'm not interested in entertaining a $90,000 less on this property. And I think Commissioner Breeden is right. Let's explore that building and see if there's anything, if it has any value to the county. If it does not, then by all means, we need to turn it back over to the business community and let them develop it and create more business space.
DNF Electing County Plan for Federal Fiscal Year 26-28. Patrick Betancourt. Welcome, Patrick.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to be reading all 73 pages to you guys tonight of this report.
Please introduce these.
I'm just kidding. I'm not going to kind of do that. Be happy to do that. This is Sheila Conley. She is one of the Medicaid supervisors. She also is over our Work First program. I'll explain what that is in just a little bit. She manages Medicaid, Work First, Energy Assistance. I think if there's a program that we have, and I don't have a home for it, I'll find Sheila and ask her to run it for us. Amy Mason is also a Medicaid supervisor for the Department of Social Services. Both of these young ladies have been serving with the county for more years than I can count. Sheila, 25, Amy, 13 years. So lots of experience in this, in these young ladies. I'm going to talk with you a little bit about our TANF Electing County Plan this evening. I'll ask Sheila and Amy to jump in and help me out if I miss something. In North Carolina, we don't like to do things easy. We'd like to do things a little bit differently, and so one of the things that we do is, if the federal government has a program, we like to rename it. So in North Carolina, we've decided to rename Temporary Assistance to Needy Families or TANF, we've decided to call that Work First. And so for those of you who are history fans, work, TANF arose out of the, in 1996, out of the old former aid to families with dependent children. Yes, sir, I'll take the hint. I'll move along pretty quickly here, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, let's all do it.
I'll speed things along. Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask for the board to vote and approve this 73-page document that we're required to provide to Department of Health and Human Services every two years because back in the late 90s, early 2000s, quite literally, Macon County had its name drawn out of a hat and enabled us to become what's known as a TANF-electing county. What that means is that in addition to the federally required requirements of TANF or Work First in North Carolina, electing counties had an option to put in some more, call them more stringent requirements before any type of government assistance was given to families. Hence the name Work First. And so these electing counties are given an additional allocation to provide services for this federally mandated program. So any of the additional requirements that allow us to keep any of the additional funds, we get to revert those funds into innovative child welfare programs. We get to invest them back into the county, whether it's through offsetting the funds that the county expends in child welfare, whether it's developing innovative child welfare programs. But it's essentially $183,000 a year that we get to put back to make sure that we're holding families accountable to do Work First requirements before they receive assistance from the county. That's the synopsis of this plan, but it requires a vote by this board to continue an electing county status. That $183,000 each year comes as long as the General Assembly allocates those funds. And over the past 20-plus years, I think that has, that's put back about $5.5 million into the county that the county didn't have to expend for child welfare services. So I would ask for a vote to continue an electing county status. I'd also ask that if the board votes to continue an electing county status, that, Mr. Chairman, if you wouldn't mind, assign this certification this evening so I can turn this plan into DHHS as quickly as possible. Their deadline was yesterday, but they did understand that certain counties, their commission boards didn't meet until after the deadline, so they've extended us some grace.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we do the approval of the Macon County TANF-Electing County Plan for Federal Fiscal Year 2026-2028.
All right, I have a motion, motion by Commissioner Shields.
I'd second that.
I have a second by Commissioner Antoine. We've all reviewed this packet. Mr. Betancourt, it was lengthy.
We memorized it. No problem.
Me too.
Any other discussion? Gentlemen? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your right arm and stating aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign.
Thank you, ladies.
Five o, Ms. Tammy.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I approach and ask you, if you wouldn't mind, to sign.
Josh, let counsel say that before you, please. Just, just saying.
It also had to be signed by our Social Services Board Chair, Mr. Fider.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Item 11B, Ms. Tammy Keizer, interviews for a permanent county manager position.
At the January meeting, you all asked me to screen the applicants again and look at dates for possible interviews for the permanent position, and so we've completed that process. As of today, we've received 12 applications. Of those 12 applications, we are still at three applicants who are fully qualified, meeting your criteria as indicated in the job posting, which included five to 10 years of county or city management experience, North Carolina local government experience, and some educational requirements. So you have three candidates that meet all of those. All of the applicants have been sent a letter notifying them of the receipt of their application, and then if they were selected for an interview, they would be notified. So the interview dates that I want to propose tonight for consideration would be two weeks from today, which would be February the 25th, March the 4th, or at your, on your regular meeting day of March the 11th. My understanding is, is that the full board would like to be involved in the interviews, which could be conducted in a closed session. So if you chose to do it at the February 25th date or the March 4th date, we would need to recess Thursday's meeting till one of those dates. Otherwise, you could do it on March the 11th, your regular meeting date, either in a closed session before the meeting or during closed session during the meeting.
And March the 4th is an option?
March the 4th. So February the 25th, March the 4th, or March the 11th are the dates.
We have, I'm involved in a construction meeting at Franklin High School with Business Advisory Council on, starting at 9:00 on February 25th. I'd like to.
So.
March the 4th.
Your pleasure as to which of those three dates you would like to choose.
March 4th on what day?
March 4th on Tuesday.
Tuesday.
The 11th, which is your regular meeting, Tuesday.
So we have closed the incoming applications?
We did. We did, on Friday, I believe, as we closed so we wouldn't continue to get applications while we were trying to schedule these. So it, my understanding was you all would like to schedule all interviews on the same day. So your pleasure as to which date you choose. If those dates don't work, we can look at a different date. Generally, I think when we were doing the interim interviews, we allowed an hour for each interview with about a half hour in between. So also, that's your pleasure as to how you want me to schedule those.
Anybody have a preference on date?
I just, on February the 25th, I have obligations. You're part of that. You just don't owe yet.
We have obligations. So how about the first, Tuesday in March or the second Tuesday in March? And I'm thinking, start around 12:00. What are you thinking, Tammy?
Set on March 4th.
Three. You would have three interviews. With some time in between, you know, you would want some, a little bit of time in between each of those, so.
Tammy, the qualifications were city or county manager?
Five, five to 10 years, city or county management experience.
Management, okay.
You know, Ms. Tammy, while we're just talking about this, I think it'd be appropriate for you to maybe forward the applicants to maybe each commissioner, where we can make sure there's not, out of full transparency, we can kind of look them over.
Sure.
Is that appropriate?
Mm-hmm.
And if there's anything that you guys have that you feel like jumps out at you that you would like to interview, I think we could provide it, Ms. Tammy, if there's something that jumps out. Mr. Antoine suggests.
Can we, can we start the application process, that interview process earlier in the day, say like 9:00?
I'm open to what I meant. I work for you guys, so whatever you decide.
How about 9:00 on the 4th of March? Good?
Going to Warren's new room. Your big office, 217, is that where we'll be?
No, I think we should.
I think we'll probably be right here.
Oh, back here.
And I feel like we need to look at those applicants pretty quickly, and that way, if we need to notify anybody else, we can.
Sure.
Are you talking about the, only the three?
Right now, I think we interview three. But I would ask Ms. Tammy to provide each of us all applications, and if there's anybody that jumps out at you out of those 12, she needs to know, I imagine by the end of this week, right?
I would think so because that, you know, to give people time to make travel arrangements or whatever they might need to do to do that. So I will, I will get those out to you guys tomorrow.
Okay.
I'll send those out. So I have March the 11th, starting at 9:00.
March 4th.
March 4th, sorry. Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Excellent.
Thank you for your work with me.
Everybody good with that? We have a consensus?
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. Now, Mr. Cabe?
I actually just want to say one thing about item number 12D, and Brent, I want to add something. Approval of surplus service weapon for Officer Scott Nelson. He couldn't be here tonight, but we just want to express our appreciation to him for the years of service that he actually had put in for Macon County.
I know it's customary to wear their surplus weapon, and like the board said, he's unable to be here. He's on a 30-day sabbatical, on a kayak, and somewhere on Okeechobee or the Evergreen or something, so he's living it up.
All right. Wonderful.
That was a great retirement party that.
It was.
Yeah, it was.
Well, we'd like to thank Mr. Nelson for his service. All right. Need a motion to approve, gentlemen?
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Sherrill, second by Commissioner Breeden. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your right arm and state aye.
Aye.
Oppose? A five-o, Tammy. All right, appointments. I would like some help from legal counsel.
All right, so we've got several appointments for the Department of Health Board. The Department of Health has certain criteria that we have to follow with regard to who gets appointed to that. There are, you have to have a doctor, a veterinarian, and dentist, a doctor. There's a whole bunch of different criteria, and so we broke those down on the appointment ballot. There have been, there are a number of people that are up for this. Some of the positions, due to the limited amount of professional people we have in those certain categories, or we only have one. In the general public, there are a grand, for the general public appointments, we have a grand total of seven. We will be voting for three on that, and that's on your ballot. In the event that we have a tie for the top vote-getters in the, either on the nurse category or the general public, then we will narrow that down to those that are in the tie, till we narrow that general public vote down to three. And I do have ballots for everyone, and if you would please state, at the bottom, you'll sign, and then likewise, write your last name so that we can keep a record of the open vote on that.
Thank you kind, sir.
and for complete transparency and public record, we now have ballots that we'll vote. Please pass down to legal counsel whenever you're completed, and we'll let him tabulate. Hmm? What?
I got it, I got it. I missed it.
While we're waiting, Ms. Kathy, have you got any little interesting updates for us?
Well, I just am very pleased with the, the turnouts. I'm very pleased with the, the turnouts for the applications for the Board of Health. It's nice to see the desire to participate and be on the board, so.
That's a really good point. There were seven applications for the general public section.
Yeah. Yeah. It's good to have that. I think we, we did some advertising in the help of our HR crew and some of our Facebook page that seemed to get some interest, so that was.
And your board has seen these names and gone over?
Yeah. Yes. Each, each of them have.
Mr. Chairman, I'll add to that. When we do have these board appointments, we have a spot on our webpage where folks can apply. We'll announce those on there. Application's basically the same for all of them, so that way, it's made known.
And your board has seen these names and gone over?
Yeah. Yes. Each, each of them have.
Mr. Chairman, I'll add to that. When we do have these board appointments, we, we have a spot on our webpage where folks can apply. We'll announce those on there. Application's basically the same for all of them, so that way, it's made known to the public. We need to know at least a month ahead of time, so we have time to get the applications in and get them to y'all, and get them obviously vetted out so that y'all can approve them. And I think that's a good process, if you're happy with this going forward, that we do that. Perhaps every time, we start over with applications, because you may have some folks that could this time and can't the next time. So I think that's a good process, if you're comfortable with that. But that way, the public can be informed, and they have the opportunity, and they're made aware of that. And you'll have some more coming up next month. So if you're happy with that process, we'll try and keep doing those the, the way these are.
If I'm picking up what you're suggesting, Mr. Cave, you're suggesting all the applications are turned in for that position. When that position's filled, those applications more or less are null and void, and when there's a new vacancy, they reapply.
That, that would be my suggestion. If you don't do that, I would at least set a timeframe of six months or a year, but I, I'm okay. You know, it, it's kind of redundant for some folks, but, but that way, you get folks every time that put in there, and they're interested in that position at that time for you.
And we don't run into an 18-month or two-year applicant? Good with that?
Yeah. It worked very well.
I actually think I've got it in my calendar.
Okay, for, on Commissioner Sherrill's ballot, we have Angie Stone as the nurse, Roy Lenzo as veterinarian, general public was Jerry Hermanson, Steve Grissom, and Nathan Feebleman, and physician was Carlos Vargas. Commissioner Breeden, Angie Stone for nurse, Roy Lenzo veterinarian, general public is Jerry Hermanson, Richard Brady, and Nathan Feebleman, physician is Carlos Vargas. For Commissioner Antoine, we have Nurse Angie Stone, veterinarian, Roy Lenzo, general public Jerry Hermanson, Steve Grissom, and Leah Taylor, Leah Taylor, physician is Carlos Commissioner Young, we have Angie Stone for nurse, Roy Lenzo veterinarian, general public is Jerry Hermanson, Steve Grissom, and Nathan Feebleman, physician is Carlos Vargas. And for Commissioner Shields, we have Angie Stone for nurse, Roy Lenzo veterinarian, general public is Jerry Hermanson, Steve Grissom, and Nathan Feebleman, physician is Carlos Vargas. Total vote tabulation we have is Angie Stone was, is the appointment for nurse, Roy Lenzo is the appointment for veterinarian, and then on the general public, the top three vote-getters were Jerry Hermanson, Steve Grissom, and Nathan Feebleman. There are no ties for the top three, so those are the three appointments for general public. And then we have Carlos Vargas as the physician.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Kathy, the, there are two spots right for it. One is, we need a optometrist?
Optometrist and a pharmacist.
And a pharmacist.
Yes.
Those two, there are no applications at this time.
Right. If we do receive applications for those two positions, I will then submit those to be presented to you again at another meeting.
And these terms are three years?
Yeah. Each one of those can be three, they can serve up to three, three-year terms, so nine years total.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think we'd probably, we'd probably want a motion accepting those, Eric. Accept those as a total, just as my...
I was just, I was just, I was asking for action. Okay. Good, I like that. All right, gentlemen?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we set those appointments to the board.
I have a motion from Commissioner Sherrill, second by Commissioner Shields. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your right arm and stating aye.
Aye.
Oppose? All right, Ms. Tammy, five oh. Any closed session? I don't have any. All right. Hearing none, looking for a motion to recess to February 13th?
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Antoine.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Breeden. Further discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising your right arm and stating aye.
Aye.
All right. We go.